We did this last week. We had quite a few people coming on to the Operations Unit and it worked out very well. So what I'll do, Mr. Massa, your name is first on the agenda. My name is Gail Feckley and I'm the Chairwoman of Ways and Means. And the other members of Ways and Means are Counselor Frida and Counselor Dombrowski. And what we're going to do is ask both of you, you know, why you're interested in volunteering for these emergency management operations. And how you feel you contribute to the same. And we'll keep it very brief. Mr. Massa, I know you said that you were coming home from work. So we won't keep you long. So if you just want to just go that with us and introduce yourself to us, that would be great.
All right, do it now?
Oh, right ahead.
Hi. My name is Louis Massa. I've been a community police officer for Woodrop, Massachusetts for, since 2010. I gone to the Reserve Academy. I graduated in 2017. I love doing community service. I've been doing this since 2010. And I think it's a great thing. And I've been trying to get my kids involved to help their community out and make it better. I currently work full-time with MGH Police and Security. I'm stationed out of the Assembly Row Facility in Somerville. And I do other work at other satellites, including the main campus in Boston. And I bought a house in Lemonster in March. And I love this city.
Yeah, that's great. And how old are your children that you're trying to convince that are doing community service?
My son just graduated from Salem State of 2020. And my daughter, yeah, my daughter is a senior at King State, New Hampshire.
Oh, that's great.
And she's on, right now going through her EMT class. So she was looking into on joining.
Maybe we'll see their names before us at some point.
Yeah, my wife also.
Yeah, so it's pretty obvious how you'd be able to contribute to the Operations Unit, Mr. Massa. We really appreciate that with all of your experience, that you're willing to volunteer and helping out the city. That's great. That's great. And Mr. Ahmed, what about you? What's your background? And what is your, what do you feel you can contribute to the Operations Unit?
Hi, my name is Ijab Ahmed. I moved into Leominster area about three years ago and I've enjoyed it very much. I actually serve as the President of the Ahmadiya Muslim Community in Pittsburgh. And so as part of that community, I've been very involved in community service work pretty much throughout my life. And wherever I've been, I've always been involved either in highway cleanup or organizing blood drives and trying to give back to the community. And so when I saw the opportunity to volunteer, I borrowed the communication from the mayor. I, you know, took up that opportunity, started delivering opportunities and helping out wherever I could and also helping out with the lunch deliveries. So I think that that was, you know, a really nice opportunity for me to kind of give back to the community and help serve in the community. And that's something that I, you know, have done a lot throughout my life. And, you know, I want to get more involved, especially where I live. You know, wherever I, we recently did purchase a condo here in Lemonster back in August a year ago. And so I want to be more involved in the community, try and give back and help in any way that we can.
That's great. Congratulations on becoming a homeowner. That's always very exciting. And I am always so taken aback by the diversity and the culture and the experience of people that we get that are willing to volunteer their time and services to the community. And the two of you certainly are, you know, within that group of people that obviously, you know, with your background, your interests, your love of the city, even though you're, you know, newly, newly perched here in Lemonster is, is a wonderful thing. So I really appreciate that both of you have agreed to volunteer and that you joined us here tonight for an interview so we could get to know you. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn both of you over to Counsel Frida to see if she has any questions or comments.
Uh, maybe just a couple of comments. Good evening, gentlemen. How are you?
Very well. Cool.
All right. Um, I just think it's great that you're fairly new to the city and that you come with ready, willing, and able capacity to serve the city. Sometimes it's a little difficult to get to know in your way around and it sounds like you guys have done it pretty well already. So I'm just thankful that you are participating and look forward to having you around for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All set, Counsel Frida?
I am. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Dombrowski.
Uh, good evening. I don't have any questions. I just, it's, it's, it's great to see quality people volunteering to help the community. I just want to thank each of you and I want to wish you both well in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other counselors have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Massa and Mr. Ahmed, thank you so much for coming this evening, virtually. Too bad we couldn't meet you personally, but maybe someday we will. Again, we appreciate very much your volunteerism. We never know how many hands we're going to need on deck at any time in the city of Lemonster. And for both of you to be willing to volunteer in this way is, we're very, very, very grateful. So thank you. So later on in the meeting, we will be confirming your appointment and you will be, I would say that we probably is going to be a man of the boat and you will be official Operations Unit volunteer. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, have a nice evening.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, all set, Counsel Feckley?
All set. Thank you.
All right, so we just have a couple of minutes before we have to start the meeting, but is the, let's see, we have a hearing scheduled on 6:51 with Legal Affairs. Maybe you just want to read the notice and get started with that, Counsel Dombrowski?
I'd be happy to, Mr. President. This is Petition 1-21. This is a public hearing before the Lemonster City Council. David R. Cormier requests to install a stop sign against southwestbound drivers on Comstock Road at Birchcroft Road. And Mr. President, I don't know if you want me to stop there and then we'll pick it up after we take care of our.
It would probably, we're literally seconds from starting the meeting, so why don't we just pause there and, uh, we'll start the meeting and go into recess.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, I have seven o'clock. If all would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, visible and with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now start with a roll call of the counselors in attendance, starting with Counsel Frida. Counsel Dombrowski?
Present.
Counsel Shalaf Ozefer?
Present.
Counsel Feckley?
Present.
Counsel Angelini?
Present.
Counsel Arndinger?
Present.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Counsel David Cormier?
Present.
And I shall, I shall be recorded as present. All nine members of the City Council are in attendance. Does the Chairwoman of Records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of August 10th, 2020. And except for a few typographical corrections, which I have shared with the City Clerk today, I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Very well. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to go into recess so we can finish our public hearings.
Make that motion, Mr. President, Counsel David Cormier.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Counsel Pauline Cormier with a second.
Okay, all in favor of going into recess, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, we are now in recess. And Counsel Dombrowski, you can continue with the public hearing on 1-21.
Okay, thank you. Relative to Petition 1-21, we did get communication from Aaron Kennedy indicating that the police were in favor of Petition 121. At this point, I'd ask any members of Legal Affairs, if they have any questions or comments? And seeing none, are there any other City Counselors that have any questions or comments? Hearing nobody, I, Mr. President, I go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 1-21? Second time, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 1-21? Third and final time, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 1-21? Hearing no one, Mr. President, I would ask that the public hearing be closed.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor. We now can move on to the public hearing on 7-21.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 7-21, John Dombrowski, Counselor-at-Large, requests to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-77 to read the following: Install a stop sign against eastbound drivers on Birchcroft Road at Comstock Road. Uh, this petition was submitted, is actually submitted by Counsel Cormier and myself. I, I don't believe Counsel Cormier ever got on the petition, but regardless, this was submitted in response to the police recommendation and their approval on the preceding petition, that this was a good idea. So we followed their lead and submitted the petition. Are there any members of Legal Affairs who have any comments or questions on 721? Hearing none, are there any members of the City Council who have any comments or questions on Petition 7-21? Hearing none, Mr. President, I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against 7-21? Second time, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 7-21? Third and final time, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 7-21? Hearing no one, Mr. President, I would ask that we close the public hearing.
Very well. Public hearing is closed and we can move on to 8-21.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 8-21, Thomas F. Arndinger, Counselor-at-Large, requests that a mass Department of Transportation approved slow, dangerous curb sign be placed on the westerly side of Grant Street, 100 feet plus or minus from the northerly intersection of Imperial Avenue and Grant Street. Is there any member, we haven't received any communication back or recommendation back from the traffic agent of the Lemonster Police Department. I've not seen anything. I would ask the clerk if we've gotten anything yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
I can double check with them.
Okay, but the, they are on for a public hearing, so I would ask, is there any members of Legal Affairs who have any comments or questions? Hearing none, I would ask if there are any members of the City Council who have any comments or questions? And I would certainly invite Counsel-at-Large, Mr. Arndinger, if he had any, any comments at this time. The hearing none, Mr. President, I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 8-21? Second time, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 8-21? Third and final time, is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 8-21? The hearing no one, Mr. President, in light of the fact that we have not gotten the referral back from the traffic agent for the Lemonster Police Department, I'm wondering if we should keep this public hearing open so that we can introduce that communication at the next hearing.
I, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay, so I would ask that this public hearing be kept open and continued and perhaps we can get a date and time from the clerk?
Yes, so the next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, September 8th, because of the holiday for Labor Day weekend. And I would recommend that we would have it at 6:54 PM.
Okay. Are you sure the meeting is September 8th?
Oh, I'll pull my calendar. Oh. Second Monday. Actually, I apologize. Thank you for bringing that up. It's the 14th. It's the 14th. That's the second Monday of the month. At 6:54, please.
Okay, so 9:14, what time are you suggesting, Madam Clerk?
6:54 PM.
And we can establish that continued public hearing when we deal with further time later on the agenda, if that's okay?
That works for me, Mr. President.
Okay, very well. We can then move on to public hearing on 2-21.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 2-21, this is a public hearing before the Lemonster City Council. The petition reads as follows: David R. Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-34 to read the following. No parking on Albert Drive, both sides for the entire length. Uh, we did get a response from the Police Department, and I'll read that into the record. This is dated July 20th, 2020. And it's an email from Lieutenant Frayer, who is the Traffic Coordinator for the Lemonster Police Department. And it reads, Petition 2-21, given the close proximity of buildings to the narrow roadway and the limited visibility upon entering, exiting from the north side on Albert Drive, we would support no parking on Albert Drive in the following locations. Albert Street, Albert Street, typo, southbound from the north intersection of Central Street and in parentheses, rear of 424 Central Street to the southernmost point of the rear of 444 Central Street's property, right side only. Albert Street northbound along the length of 40 Albert Street, right side only. So given the police, the traffic coordinator's recommendation, at this point, I would defer to the petitioner to see if he would want to amend his original petition. Counsel Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, I just want to make it clear that when I put the petition in, I did not have, you know, any intention of having the final result be exactly what it said. I had heard from one of the neighbors, one of the business owners there that had concerns with some of the parking and, and, and the inability for emergency vehicles to access the road and things like that. I guess he had spoken to the Police Department, who in turn told him to contact me. And I didn't have a chance to contact the Police Department, so I, I put in a petition and, and my expectation was that the Police Traffic Division would go down there. They would look at the situation, they would make recommendations and, and come back with something, which is exactly what happened. It worked out exactly as I was planning. So I did talk to the person who contacted me originally and, and told him what the police had suggested. And I believe he's, he's okay with it. He thinks that it's a start and, and should address some of the concerns. So I am, I am comfortable with what the police have, have recommended there. And I, and I would ask that, I would actually make a motion that we go ahead and amend the petition. We can either do that now or we can do that later during the meeting. Although we should probably do it now so that we can have a public hearing on the amended version, I would guess. So I'll make that motion now.
Okay, you want to make a, a specific motion, Counsel Cormier?
Yes, I would ask that we make a motion to accept the recommendations of what the response from the traffic officer was in his letter.
Okay. So just to elaborate on that again, that, that recommendation was no parking on Albert Drive in the following locations. Albert Drive, southbound from the north intersection of Central Street, in parentheses, rear of 424 Central Street to the southernmost point of the rear of 444 Central Street's property, right side only. And then Albert Drive northbound along the length of Albert Drive, right side only.
That, that is my motion. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there any second to that motion?
I'll second that. This is Counsel Shalaf Ozefer.
Okay. Um, Mr. President, should I take the vote on this or do you, do you want to jump in?
I, I don't know. I, I think perhaps we should continue and get any comments from the, if there's any additional comments on the council or public before we vote on the motion. So all the information is out there.
That's, that's a good point. So Legal Affairs has weighed in. I would, I would, for the record, be in favor of the amended, the motion to amend. Are there any other counselors that would like to weigh in on this or have any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Counsel Frida. I don't necessarily disagree, but I do disagree with amending it now and voting on it as amended when the public hasn't had an opportunity to see what the recommendations are. I think we need to give them, give people time to respond. That's kind of a congested area. And that auto repair shop is really congested in that whole section. But there are single-family homes there that have to be taken into consideration. Do, do no parking, then people need to realize when they have company, that means people can't park on the street. So I think there should be an opportunity for people to see what the recommendations are before we vote on that.
Are you, are you, when you say the recommendations, um, I'm not sure what you mean.
The amendment, the amended.
All right, so are you suggesting, I, I mean, I'm going to go to the public, Counsel Frida, now or after other counselors get an opportunity to speak. But are you suggesting, given the congestion on Albert Drive, that we not take a final vote today and give the public a little more time to digest this? Or are you simply asking that we go to the public before we take any type of vote tonight?
That would be my, my suggestion. I'm not necessarily, I'm not necessarily against it. But I think it's, it's quite a change from what, what was originally submitted. So I think there needs to be some opportunity for the public to, to weigh in if they choose to.
All right, so you're, you're, are you, again, though, are you suggesting, I'm, I'm just talking.
I would leave, I would leave the, I would leave the hearing open and I would, down, down the road when we vote, I have further time.
Okay. Are there any other, any other counselors that would like to weigh in on this? Okay, hearing none. I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 2-21? Either the original version or the proposed amended version. And if you could, I know somebody has. Uh, and if you could, I know somebody has called in. If you could just identify yourself by stating your name and address for us, that would be appreciated.
Yes, my name is Gary Pelletier. Um, I like the new, I like the new amended, um, version. Um, my bet, my address is four twenty-four Central Street. Um, all the businesses on that side of the street, which is the Route twelve, southbound are all commercial properties. Um, there's just a lot of congested parking on the mo- on the, um, on the south side all the time. Um, people double parking, um, it's just been an ongoing problem. It got to the point where, uh, I was out of work, uh, per the governor, um, for three and a half months. And, um, the tr- it got even worse when I was gone. My tenant upstairs who was still working at the time, so she couldn't even bu- uh, back out of the parking lot at four twenty-four Central Street, she was afraid of hitting somebody. Um, at that point, I shot off an email to Dean Mazzarella. Uh, the next day, his secretary, uh, Michelle, uh, let me know that she did get that and they would be in touch with me. Um, about two days later, I, I was in my office and Officer Ramos through the traffic, uh, division, uh, stopped in to see me and asked me if I was the one, um, that, um, called in to put a complaint about this. And I said I was, and he said that his lieutenant, uh, who's lieutenant, I, I think it's John Farah, uh, basically said, um, that we know there's a problem going on here, but somewhat our hands are tied. Uh, he was told to tell me to get ahold of David Cormier, my ward counselor, and basically start a petition, um, to try to do some, do something about no parking. It's just been an ongoing problem, it's a safety issue. Um, but people on the other side of the street are residential. There's, uh, two resident, three residential buildings on the north side, but it's all commercial on the, um, south side. And I recommend, you know, that, you know, we accept, you know, the, um, I should say, the amended version of this, this would really clear up a lot of problems. Uh, there were times when people, I have a, a business where clients can't get up and down the street because of the ongoing double parking. So, um, but anyway, with that, thank you for hearing me, uh, I hope that we can go, you know, move, move on with this.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pelletier, appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition two dash twenty-one? Third and final time, is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition two dash twenty-one? Hearing none, Mr. President, uh, if I could just, um, do some quick subcommittee work?
Sure.
I, I, I tend to agree, um, with Counselor Frida's suggestion. I, I think that is a, a very congested area. Um, so I, my inclination would be to leave, uh, leave the meeting open for one more hearing and, you know, perhaps try to get the word out there of the amended, um, petition and see if we can get any more feedback because it does sound like it's, you know, a problematic area. Uh, so I'll first go to Counselor Cormier and, and see how he feels about that.
Oh, if I may, I, I personally, I have no issue with, with closing the hearing and moving on. I petitioned the most stringent no parking on the street that you, that you could possibly get. And now it's been pared down to a smaller section. So if, if people didn't have a problem with the public notice saying no parking at all on the entire street, if they're not here raging against it, okay, ma- I believe Madam Clerk can, Madam Clerk, this was properly advertised?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
You have the notice, you, we, it's in, it's in black and white? Then if nobody is here railing against no parking anywhere on the entire street, then I can't see a problem with, um, having less of a petition than what I originally, um, you know, filed. So I, I see no problem with, I mean, if, if it was the other way around, then I could understand. But I, I see no problem with closing the hearing.
Okay, uh, Counselor, uh, Shalfo Zephyr?
I, I, I agree with the petitioner, Counselor Cormier. I, I, um, understand his argument that the amended petition, should we amend it, is less restrictive than his initial proposal. So I'm happy, um, voting on the, uh, petition as amended, um, given the, uh, traffic, uh, police department's, um, input.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. President, the, uh, the legal affairs, the majority of the legal affairs committee, uh, would like to close the hearing. So I would ask that the hearing be closed and we'll take this up later in the evening.
Okay, so you want to wait to, to vote on the motion to amend till, you, you don't want to vote on the motion to amend before you close the public hearing? It seems to me, I, I think the point was well taken by a committee that this is a less restrictive as opposed to more restrictive amendment, but if the, if the, uh, for some reason, if we vote, um, in session on the amendment and the amendment failed for some reason, uh, they, then we will be, so might it make sense to vote on the motion before you close the public hearing?
That's a, that's a good point, um, do you want to handle that vote or?
Sure, I can do that. All right, I can handle that, so, um, and then I'll get back to you on what you want to do with the public hearing after the, after you vote.
Sounds good.
So there is a motion on the floor to amend, um, two dash twenty-one, um, to make it, uh, more, to, to make it less restrictive than it currently is. Um, do you want to, to the sake of clarity, Counselor, uh, Dombrowski, state the police department recommendation, which is the basis for the motion to amend?
Sure, so, um, there's a motion to amend petition two dash twenty-one to read as follows. No parking on Albert Drive, southbound from the north intersection of Central Street, parentheses, rear of four twenty-four Central Street to the southernmost point of the rear of four forty-four Central Street, right side only, period. Also no parking on Albert Drive, northbound along the length of forty Albert Drive, in parentheses, right side only.
Okay, and that motion was seconded by Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. Um, is there any further discussion by any counselor on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Frida.
Yes, Counselor.
Um, I, I still have an issue with this, that, that's an area that is congested. I understand the amendments, I'm not necessarily against them. But the gentleman that spoke tonight, the gentleman that, that took, that asked for some, um, some actions to begin with. So clearly he knows that's why he was here. Um, but there are other peo- when you have a small lot on a street and you don't have a whole lot of parking and you have someone visiting, now they can't pack in the front of your house without worrying about getting a ticket. That, that's kind of serious when you get to those, those decisions. Um, I just think that people should have an opportunity to know what's being proposed because after the fact, we've all been there, after the fact, people start yelling about it. So I, I just, we, I don't know that this is something that that, it, it, it's an emergency situation. I think it's something that could wait another week, uh, another two weeks and give people an opportunity to know what's going on with it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Is there any other counsel that wishes to, uh, uh, discuss this further before we vote? Okay, hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger? Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as Jay, the amendment passes by a vote of eight to one. And now I will send this back to you, Counselor Dombrowski, uh, as to what you want to do with the public hearing at this point.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. At this point, um, I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing and we'll take this matter up, um, later on in the evening.
Okay, very well, thank you, Counselor. Um, we will now, uh, conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that would wish to address the city council in the public forum? I will ask a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? Hearing none, the public forum is closed, we are back in session, starting with communications from the mayor and appointments.
A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Daniel Grammell to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer.
The appointment of Mr. Grammell is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, first time on the agenda, regular course. And I would ask, um, Madam Clerk to, uh, contact Mr. Grammell to come for an interview at, a virtual interview at our next meeting.
Okay.
Very well, the appointment of Mr. Grammell has been given regular course with a, uh, appointment to be set up. Moving on to the appointment of Mr. Fisher.
A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of William Fisher to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer.
The appointment of Mr. Fisher is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, Simoli, it's first time on the agenda. And I will ask Madam Clerk to contact Mr. Fisher to come for an interview at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much, the appointment of Mr. Fisher is given regular course with the, uh, city clerk to set up an interview, uh, for our next meeting. Moving on to communications, C dash thirteen.
C dash thirteen, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that Diana Richards be exempt from the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter two sixty-eight A, twenty B, conflict of interest regarding election work.
C dash thirteen is referred to the chairwoman, chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course.
C dash thirteen is given regular course. Matters before the city council, starting with the financial report, um, is the chairman of finance ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, we started the, uh, on July one, twenty twenty with fourteen million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, uh, when free cash got certified from two, uh, it would be two fiscal years ago now. Um, we added seven million, four hundred thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars to that. We have since spent or will spend, uh, pending the authorization of tonight's communication, one hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which will leave us a balance of twenty-one million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. And that is the financial report.
Any questions on the financial report by any counselor?
I do, Mr. President, Counselor Frida.
Yes, Counselor Frida.
Uh, to the, to the chair of finance, um, usually by this time or even prior to this, uh, there are a couple of major, um, major appropriations out of that free cash. I mean, it's kind of deceiving right now to have, to look at that number because it's by, by the, um, the way the budget goes with water and sewer, they always get at least a million dollars back every year, just by the way it's budgeted. So there's going to be a couple million there, and I think there was a third, there's usually a third, um, um, not saying it's, it's a lot, but there's usually, I can't think of what it is right now, but I know water and sewer is like historic. It goes back because of the way it's budgeted, but, um, and they use that for a lot of their, their, uh, projects in the water and sewer, uh, area. And it, I can't think of what the third one is, but there's usually two or three that as soon as free cash comes in, uh, that's taken right off the top. I'm just curious as to why it's not, because I think it has to.
Thank you, uh, through, through the chair. I, I certainly noticed that and, um, you know, I will, I will get an answer as to when we are going to see that transfer. Um, again, you know, there, there hasn't been much that's been going on lately that's normal because of extensions that have been given, uh, you know, with, um, they were handling things because of COVID. But I, I will get an answer and find out, uh, uh, where that is and, and when it's coming and why it has not yet. I certainly will do that.
Just, just for clarity's sake, there are usually two, um, significant transfers, if you will, um, from certified free cash and one, they're separate, one for water and one for sewer. The budgets are two different budgets. Um, and that does typically happen every year.
I thought there's usually a third in there, I can't remember what that might be. I know water and sewer is, is definitely two of them.
All right, well, uh, Counselor Cormier can look into that, uh, before the next meeting and get a, get an idea of what might be coming with respect to a communication from the mayor's office on those items. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, uh, we will now move on to finance and C dash twelve, is the chair, chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash twelve, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request an appropriation of seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars be made to the election to be transferred to the stabilization fund. Uh, basically here, um, we got a, a letter, uh, to the mayor's office from the city, the city clerk, uh, Caitlin Hupman, August sixth, twenty twenty. Uh, testing, I am respectfully requesting an additional appropriation of seventeen thousand, eighteen and disinfects three polling places after the September first, twenty twenty and September third, twenty twenty election. The polling locations that will be disinfected are the Skyview Middle School Gymnasium, the Francis Drake Elementary School Gymnasium, the Lomster City Auditorium. The school has been requested that after the city use their facilities for elections, that they be properly disinfected in, in the interest of safety for the students and staff. Uh, so, um, I think it's, you know, just a sign of, a sign of, uh, the year twenty twenty again. Um, with the pandemic, everybody wants to ensure safety and, uh, wants to be, uh, making sure that, you know, doorknobs, handles and any other surface, everything is clean and, and deep cleaned and disinfected. Um, so, um, and I know the question has come about, or will come about whether we get reimbursement, that, that, not. Um, um, no guarantee on that, that we will be reimbursed, reimbursed from any CARES Act money or anything else. Um, but o- obviously, you know, at this point, um, you know, we are using the school facilities and, and they, they are used by many different people. Um, you know, certainly for September, you know, we know there won't be any students in there. It, it, you know, even if things change, but there's going to be staff and, and, and faculty and we don't know what November's going to look like either if things will change by then and there will be some students in there. So, uh, would by, I, it would be my recommendation that we authorize of the money and, and, oh, um, able to, uh, um, you know, dispense of it a, a, as needed, uh, you know, uh, as, as the elections happen. So, uh, I'll ask you, poll members of my committee.
Very well, Counselor, uh, Pauline Cormier?
I'm in agreement.
And Counselor Angelini?
I concur with the recommendation of the chair.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant, um, C dash twelve, is there any further discussion? Okay, um, hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yea. The petition is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum, seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars be appropriated to the election and registration expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the question, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea. Yea?
Yea.
Those opposed? The order is adopted. Madam Clerk, I would just point out that the point made by the chairman of finance that the schools will be fully closed September one and for probably a long time after that, the way it sounds. Could you, and I've got a call into the superintendent as well, I wanted to make sure this money was available to you in case it is in fact needed, but let's redress, if you don't mind, whether we really have to clean these gymnasiums, at least for the primary in September.
Okay.
Can we do that tomorrow?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Moving on to legal affairs and one dash twenty-one. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition one dash twenty-one, David R. Cormier, request to install a stop sign against southwestbound drivers on Comstock Road at Birchcroft Road. My recommendation is to grant petition one dash twenty-one. I would ask that you poll my committee.
Okay. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm in agreement with that.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to grant petition one dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yea. The petition is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Two dash twenty-one. Is the chairman of legal affairs ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Petition two dash twenty-one, as amended, David R. Cormier, request to amend Chapter thirteen, section thirteen dash thirty-four, to read the following. No parking on Albert Drive, southbound from the north intersection of Central Street, parentheses, rear of four twenty-four Central Street, to the southernmost point of the rear of four forty-four Central Street's property, in parentheses, right side only. Also, Albert Drive, northbound, along the length of forty Albert Drive, right side only. My recommendation is to adopt the, is to adopt two twenty-one as amended. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm in agreement.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to grant two dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger? I mean, Angelini, sorry.
Counselor Angelini, yay.
Counselor Arndinger? Still yea?
Yay.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to one. Two dash twenty-one is granted. Moving on to seven dash twenty-one. Does the chairman of legal affairs have a report?
I do, Mr. President. Petition seven dash twenty-one, John Dombrowski, Counselor at Large, request to amend Chapter thirteen, section thirteen dash seventy-seven, to read the following. Install a stop sign against eastbound drivers on Birchcroft Road at Comstock Road. My recommendation is to grant petition seven dash twenty-one. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm in agreement.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the legal affairs committee to grant seven dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. Seven dash twenty-one is granted. Moving on to eight dash twenty-one. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition eight dash twenty-one, Thomas F. Arndinger, Counselor at Large, request that a Massachusetts Department of Transportation approved low dangerous curb sign be placed on the westerly side of Grant Street, one hundred feet plus or minus from the norway intersection of Imperial Avenue and Grant Street. We had a public hearing tonight that we left open because we're still waiting for the recommendations from the Leominster Police Department Traffic Agent. Accordingly, the recommendation, Mr. President, is for further time.
Very well. And also...
I believe we may need to vote on the public hearing as well.
Yes, yes, we do. So the recommendation of your committee is to grant eight dash twenty-one further time and establish a continued public hearing date of September fourteenth at six fifty-four P.M., I understand?
Correct.
And the committee members are okay with that? I'll check quickly with Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I'm okay with that, thank you.
All right. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to give eight dash twenty-one further time, establish a continued public hearing date of nine fourteenth, September fourteenth, at six fifty-four P.M. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say yea. Yea?
Yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, eight dash twenty-one is given further time and a public hearing is established on September fourteenth at six fifty-four P.M. Moving on to Ways and Means, starting with the appointment of Mr. Massa. Is the chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. This is a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Louis Massa to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer. Mr. Massa called in tonight and joined us. He is a recent, a recent new resident of the city of Leominster who wants to give back to his community. He has much experience in law enforcement and is even instilling in his children of the importance of community service. So I feel so he'd be a wonderful addition to the Office of Emergency Management, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Okay. Counselor, let's see, Counselor Frida?
I agree.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I also agree.
All right. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to confirm the mayor's appointment of Louis Massa to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call vote. Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The confirmation of Louis Massa is approved. Moving on to the mayor's appointment of Ayaz Ahmed. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. This is a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Ayaz Ahmed to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer. Mr. Ahmed joined us also by phone this evening. He is very involved with the Islamic community in the city of Leominster. His family has recently purchased a home here. He is committed to community service, and similarly, I believe that Mr. Ahmed would be a wonderful addition to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit. I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor John Dombrowski?
I agree.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ayaz Ahmed to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit. Is there any further discussion? This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The mayor's appointment of Ayaz Ahmed is confirmed to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit. Moving on to the reappointment of Yanath Bermudez Camp. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Yanath Bermudez Camp to the Housing Authority term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Again, this is a reappointment. Miss Bermudez Camp has been serving on the Housing Authority. I believe this is a very important position, especially during these trying times, and we need somebody with experience on the authority. So my recommendation would be to confirm her reappointment, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Frida?
I support that.
And Counselor Dombrowski?
I'm in agreement.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the reappointment of Yanath Bermudez Camp to the Housing Authority for a term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The mayor's appointment of Yanath Bermudez Camp to the Housing Authority term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-five is confirmed. We have no new business, we have no old business. On the community calendar, I just would like to indicate, we spoke the last time a little bit about clearing up whether or not the JA Festival, Johnny Appleseed Festival, was going to go on. I can confirm from talking to former counselor, Richard Marchand, that the JA Festival, the Johnny Appleseed Festival, is canceled, as well as Starburst, although Counselor Marchand, who many know as the coordinator, longtime coordinator of the Johnny Appleseed Festival, is attempting to organize some virtual musical entertainment for the community in lieu of the festival this year. And of course, we wish him every success with that endeavor, but the actual Johnny Appleseed Festival is in fact canceled. Does anybody else have anything under the heading of community calendar?
Mr. President, may I just mention early voting?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
So I just want to let everybody in the public know that we are doing early voting this week for the September first, twenty twenty state primaries. The hours are going to be Monday through Friday, eight thirty to four, except on Thursday. We're open until five thirty P.M.
Okay, so that's Monday through Friday. I'm sorry, again, the hours?
Eight thirty to four, and then Thursday, we're open until five thirty P.M.
Okay, so Thursday's the late day. And can residents drop ballots off at the city mailbox in the front of City Hall as well?
Yes, we have a drop box that's locked throughout the day at the top of the stairs in front of City Hall. We check it three times a day. It's a grayish blue color. If you feel comfortable doing that, you're welcome to. If not, you're also welcome to come into the City Hall, to the city clerk's office, and drop off your ballot. We are open to the public.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Anybody else have anything under the community calendar? Okay, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Have a nice Labor Day weekend, and we'll see you in September.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.